Welcome. I'd like to convene our business meeting of November 18th, 2021. Please stand and say the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to open up the meeting with, to public comment on any of the listed agenda items. Okay, seeing nobody want to do that, we're going to start with the consent agenda. So I'd like item one, please.
Result of approve the consent agenda items two through 13 to present to the board of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino, do you have a summary of course?
Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of meeting minutes for the last two meetings, approval of CSE CPSE placements, an updated 2021-22 substitute listing, a revised 2021-22 school calendar which reflects the half day for elementary students on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, some additional working hours for staff members, the abolishment of two positions that occurred at the end of the last school year, library aide at the middle school, and a part-time office assistant in the transportation office. We're accepting an anonymous donation for families in need at the elementary school, a very generous donation. We're appointing additional elementary school character education committee member, transportation contracts for two students, the winter 21-22 coaches, and the fall 21 postseason coaches stipends. We're approving school monitors for substitute positions, and we're also approving the disposal or sale of some district equipment. It's a large kitchen mixer which will hopefully go to auction.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I do want to just recognize we had a community member make a very generous donation, and they asked to remain anonymous, but I do want to just highlight the fact they had donated money both earmarked for Thanksgiving and for Christmas to really help struggling families. So I'll certainly allow them to stay anonymous, but I do want to again recognize their very generous donation to this school district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. So we're ready for report, oh, presentation, sorry.
All right. So our first presentation this evening will be Mr. David Cantrowitz, our director of athletics, physical education, health services, providing an update. Thank you.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay? Welcome, thank you. We're going to go through just a brief presentation about our return to sports. We had a very strong.
Dave, sorry, get closer to the mic, especially with the mask on.
Got it.
And we can't see the presentation.
Oh.
I know someone who could fix that. It's the way technology works.
Technology at its finest.
I know Dominic's really good at technology.
When all else fails, ask a child or a student to do it.
Is there a nine-year-old in the audience?
Yeah, now the laptop's not recognizing the objectives.
You want to try mine now?
Yeah, let's try someone. Oh wait, you don't have. Look after.
You just want one?
Jill gave you her.
Will that work?
She does.
He hasn't opened already.
It's worth waiting for. He does a good job on these. Sorry.
Dave, if this doesn't work, you're going to have to act it out.
Or sing. I was thinking singing would be fun. That's Jackie.
There we go.
Well, Jill is up.
That's promising.
Nobody breathe, nobody talk.
Oof.
That's a busy screen, my friend.
That's what I call it, looking into my closet.
That's it, that's it. All I saw was the beach.
Is it going to be? Yeah.
Well, you want to do the NISBA discussion while we're waiting?
Yeah. Why don't we, we'll move forward to the next presentation while we work on the first one, because there's no presentation.
So, um, so the, our NISBA Area 10 Director was Peggy Zagabi, and she was elected chairman of NISBA. So she is no longer going to be our area director. We got a letter from Cheryl Brady asking us to nominate her for Area 10 Director. So she's served on the White Plains School District Board from 2007 to now, and the Southern Westchester Bosse's Board from 2019 to the present. So she has both, you know, her local Board of Education as well as Bosse's. So I didn't know if there was any discussion before we nominate her.
I'm glad you sent her a resume.
Mm-hmm, yep. Okay, so when it comes up later.
Just real clear, Barbara, just New York State School Board Association.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
So do we have to draft a letter, Barbara, or do we just know or know?
No, I think it's, it's on the agenda, Maureen, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. To send a letter.
Are there any?
Okay, David, you're up.
Well, that was lovely.
That's enough of a break for you.
Good filler, Barbara, good filler. Enough of a break. Okay.
All right, so our goal coming into this school year was to.
Hear me okay? There it is. All right. Our goal coming into this school year was to make sure that our students had the most opportunities possible to participate in our after-school athletic program while maintaining the safest possible environment for them to do so. It definitely had its set of unique challenges, but overall, our fall return was extremely successful. We had incredibly high participation rates, and we were able to bring back some of the teams that we haven't had in recent years. During the fall, we had over 300 students that were registered for our modified and high school athletic programs. We were able to bring back our JV field hockey team and our JV football teams. We increased, you know, our student participation that way, as long as having some record-high numbers in some of our individual sports as well. Some of our highlights from the fall, obviously, the return of JV football and JV field hockey was great. We had over 40 girls involved in the field hockey program and over 50 boys involved in the football program, including JV and varsity together. We had a very strong cross-country season. We set a couple of school records. We had some of our athletes qualify for the state championships, and they actually placed 25th and 29th respectively in the state out of 130 runners across New York State. We had our mascot name search, because our Putnam Valley Tiger was without a name for as long as anybody could have remembered that I asked about it. We had a, we had a long student survey, went through three rounds. We landed on the name Tyson with over 265 votes. So we had Tyson put onto his Putnam Valley football jersey, and we revealed that at our homecoming game this November. In addition to, you know, our, our success on the field just as a district, we did have a few of our teams reach the section playoff round. Our volleyball and our field hockey teams both made it to the quarterfinals of the section tournament. Our cross-country team, although it's an individual sport and we did not qualify as a team, we did have girls that made it to the highest level to the state competition and did incredibly well. We had 24 of our fall athletes across all of our programs earn all-league, all-section, or all-state honors. All-league, again, is within the league of schools that we face in any given season. All-section is within Section 1 in New York State, and all-state is encompassing every section, each of the 12 of them. We've made a big focus on creating opportunities for in-district coaching opportunities, coach filling coaching vacancies from within, making sure that the people that are spending time with our student athletes are having the opportunity to see them not only on the field, but in the classroom, in the hallways as well, to try to develop that sense of community, that sense of belonging. And really, my goal here is to put the people who have the most experience and the best relationships with our kids in their lives to put them in more of a position to succeed, be successful, and play at the next level. Another major initiative that we had was improving the fan experience. We were able to, with the help of our tech department, create a T-shirt launcher that we used at halftime for the, for the football game for homecoming. We had our color guard walk down our student athletes before the game, and we just tried to find ways to make coming to our games, whether it was football, whether it was field hockey, more enjoyable, more interactive for the fans. And we're looking forward to continuing that into the winter and building upon what we've already started with. We've worked on building our alumni relations. We hosted our alumni lacrosse game in the summer before school started. We're also in the plans right now and in the making of forming our alumni basketball game, which will take place this winter at some point in December, finding a way to keep our alumni and our recent graduates involved in the athletic programming and making sure that they have the opportunity to see what they've left behind and what they've helped build is still growing and still improving every year. And last but not least, we launched our fall superstore, and albeit though there were a few shipping errors with the supply chain bottlenecks, but we did get everything out. The store is actually up and running now for the winter. Everything now will ship directly to home, so nobody has to worry about it coming to the school and getting lost in transit. We were really excited about that. It was a great fundraising opportunity for the athletic department and our kids. And while we don't have the final numbers yet in from the fall, it was, you know, a very significant and a very helpful fundraising opportunity for everybody. So looking ahead at what's next, my goal right now is to build from within. You know, I've only been here since July, but I'm getting a lay of the land and understanding of how things work here at Putnam Valley, and finding ways to really build capacity within the district to improve the opportunities for our kids. First and foremost, within athletics, that begins with our coaches. With the coaches, we focus on building the capacity of our staff to participate and support the athletic department. That could be, you know, as a coach, that could be as a chaperone, as a monitor, as an assistant, or a volunteer, whatever aspect and capacity they want to participate in, we will find a role for them. Within that goal of mine, we've started with recruitment. We've been meeting with our new teachers and creating opportunities for the staff to become involved in the program. Like I said, excuse me, whether it's chaperones, coaches, announcers, assistants, we're finding roles and creating opportunities to get people involved and get more face time with our student athletes. For training, we're now providing all of our current and future coaches with the opportunity to gain permanent professional certification in their sport-specific area. There is a curriculum that New York State runs in order to certify coaches. It has to do with philosophy, health sciences, and then sport-specific courses based on the sport that's in season. I went through the process of becoming certified to teach those courses, so we're able to do it all in-house without having to send coaches or teachers out of the building during the school day. And lastly, you know, evaluation, making sure our program stays current, stays consistent, and continuously improves. We've implemented mandatory coaching clinics preseason meetings, and we've created the support system and development system for our coaches to learn more, not only about their specific content and sport area, but the art of coaching, the skill of coaching, and how to improve their coaching skills long-term. Last, we're taking a look at facility utilization. We have, you know, our amazing wellness center and so many great fields and areas that are available to the community, not just our students. But our goal is to provide the student athletes and the community members with improved access to our facilities. Starting with the gymnasiums, we, we've started hosting college recruitment experiences for student athletes. We've had a few open gyms for our basketball teams already with some D1 and D2 colleges coming to see and support our students. We've partnered with a number of community organizations and teams to provide practice space for youth development programs, whether it's through Putnam Valley Parks and Rec or other youth programs that utilize our spaces. It's helping us create that foundational base for our athletic department to make sure that as students graduate, we replenish our rosters with younger students coming up through the system. And obviously, our gyms are always the home to our Putnam Valley Tiger athletic teams. Our wellness center in the fall proved absolutely critical to our success in regards to practice space, in regards to inclement weather, and really just an opportunity to bring all of our programs under one roof to, to convey and display information that we had for them. It gave us the opportunity to practice, you know, regardless of the weather. Coming up now in the winter, our spring teams are going to start utilizing it after our winter practices head out, so we should be well-prepared for baseball, softball, lacrosse, and even soccer, which comes back in the fall. It's really an invaluable resource that has really helped us not only host more activities at one time with its use to host cheerleading and wrestling, but it's provided us with that opportunity that regardless of what's going on outside, regardless of what's going on in the gym, all of our students have a place where they can be safe from the weather, from other elements, and not distracted by any other outside influences. And lastly, the fields and grounds, we've seen an increased usage of our walking track and our trail. We've ensured that lighting's been provided throughout the season, whether it was at night or in the morning in the fall, and carrying on into the winter. One of our goals now is creating unique practice spaces to reduce turf congestion, whether that's through creating practice fields in the baseball outfield for the football team, or finding ways to utilize the backfield in different and unique ways so that our soccer and field hockey teams can practice at the same time. So the last part of what's coming next, we're looking for sustained growth. We want to be able to create opportunities for our student athletes and our students to become more involved in the athletic program in maybe ways that they haven't. So four of the main sports that are coming through the pipeline right now that have reached either emerging sport status or are now full-fledged athletic opportunities in Section 1. First is the area of esports, which was always, you know, very controversial at the high school level of whether it's a competitive athletic activity or if it's a hobby, but with its acceptance in the NCAA, it's starting to become more prevalent in New York State, and it just gives us an area to have students who may have been disconnected with the athletic program serve under our banner as Putnam Valley and find a way to represent the school in their own unique way. The second was men's volleyball, which has already been an established sport here in Section 1 and in New York State. We've started to have some growing interest from our student population regarding that, and I've been working and talking with a few of our students about possibly creating a club this spring or an interest team just to see what our numbers look like and if it would be something that was sustainable. The last two are now emerging sports in Section 1 specifically, girls' flag football and girls' wrestling. They've emerged in other parts of New York State, whether it's in Section 9 or New York City, where they're already hosting competitive tournaments. There's a pilot program this year in Section 1 for a very limited number of teams, and while we're not, we're not there yet with our numbers, it is something that we're looking forward to and looking forward to examining if that's going to be one of the possibilities of activities we can bring for our students here. And last, but certainly not least, you know, the elephant in the room is, as far as athletic goes, is always COVID-19. So our current policies throughout the fall were that masks were required for all indoor activities and events. They're encouraged, but not required for outdoor events. When traveling on the bus, all of the student athletes and the passengers must be masked with the windows rolled down. In the event that a team experienced a positive case, fully vaccinated athletes were not required to quarantine unless they became symptomatic. We did not provide locker rooms for visiting teams in order to maintain our sanitation procedures. And most importantly, we were able to operate our indoor sports without having a restriction on the number of home or visiting spectators during the fall season. So this is an area, you know, as we move into the winter, that is going to become much more prevalent and relevant in our discussions. But our goal as an athletic department, as a district, is to provide the least number of restrictions possible while still maintaining the safety and the integrity of our student athletes and our community. One of the ways that we've done that is we've partnered with LocalLive. All of the events that will occur in our gym this winter, whether it be wrestling, girls' basketball, or boys' basketball, will be live streamed, so if you don't, you know, feel safe or comfortable being in the gym, or you'd rather not be around that many people, we do provide an outlet for everyone to watch and be involved in our school community and our athletic events. And that was all that I had prepared. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
David, when you were talking about recruitment, is it only high school faculty that you're, and staff that you're recruiting? Or are you reaching out to middle school or elementary school staff?
Yep, so we actually have four new modified-level 7th and 8th grade coaches, and those roles were filled from middle school staff.
Okay.
So we're, we're trying as hard as we can, and when the vacancy allows us to, to fill middle school openings with middle school personnel and high school options with high school personnel. Now, if we have an overly qualified candidate that comes from outside the district with a strong resume and a track record of success, we're not going to overlook that for the sake of keeping it in the district.
Right.
But we are trying to build the capacity of our teachers and our other coaches to stay more involved and more consistently involved in their school level.
Okay, that's good. I mean, just because I know that we have, you know, talented people at other buildings, not just the high school, so it's good.
Absolutely.
I, I have a question, David?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, well done, thank you. It's great to see your involvement so far this year. You've been on everything, and so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. The wellness center availability for all schools is appropriate during the school day. I just want to confirm that's accurate.
Yes, absolutely, and it actually will be used in the next coming weeks as we plan for our middle school concert. The middle school band size has gotten a little bit larger than would comfortably fit in our performing arts center, so we'll be doing that rehearsal and the actual event most likely in the middle school gym. So during the day, during the periods when the band is rehearsing, the middle school students will come over to the wellness center for their PE classes slash recess, and they'll have the opportunity to use that as best they can. Within the high school, I know we have teachers that go down there for classes other than PE to utilize the media down there and teach kind of their lab classrooms and their more interactive lessons.
Right, and I, I have heard there's interest also in the middle school teachers doing the same as the high school teachers.
Yes, and they're more than welcome to.
So thank you. Another question, field and grounds. I mean, I'm not saying it's our students, our school, but there's been a lot of, as usual, it's not just this year, every year, a lot of trash on the field after games or as people walk, et cetera. What do we do to try to curtail that?
So I think in the fall, what kind of exacerbated those issues was we had a pretty significant bee infestation in the garbages. Whenever garbage hit those cans, they got filled with bees, and it became almost dangerous, which kind of prevented people from using them. But we seemed to have gotten that issue under control as the season went on. But the first, the easiest step is to provide more garbage cans, more receptacles for people to use. The second is controlling where the food and drink is able to spread to, whether we can keep it closer to our concession area, where we know there's easier ways to throw it away versus people that go higher in the bleachers. Those items don't typically make their way back down to the garbage can. So I think it's a matter of controlling where the food is served, when the food is served, and really as far as our monitors and our chaperones go, enforcing the throwing away of the garbage at the end.
Thank you.
Sorry. For public comment, the rest of the meeting will go quick, and then you'll have an opportunity to ask the questions. For, Dave will hang out. If you have a question, I mean, you can.
I'll be.
Really, the questions should come to the board anyway, but I'm sure David will do his best to answer as well. The rest of the meeting should go pretty quick, so it shouldn't be too long. I do want to commend, I think David's done a tremendous job in a very short period of time here in Putnam Valley. He's done an excellent job in creating community partnerships, working with the youth organizations, getting our own student athletes involved with younger students. There's definitely a new energy and excitement at the games. Having fans back at the games has been awesome this year after having very few to know fans at some games last year because of the restrictions in place. So just that environment, I know the teams feed off of having the fans there. And although there'll be some limits in place for winter sports, we still are looking forward to welcoming students and parents into our gyms to cheer on our student athletes. And the other piece I just want to commend, I know that David's, all, door is always open, and I'm always impressed by the relationships he has with students, the number of students that are in and out of his office, speaking with him, and really doing whatever he can do after hearing from the students to better our systems and our program. So just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
And I love the fan store.
Okay, we're going to move to reports, so we're going to hear from the students first, but.
So before we begin, I do want to officially welcome Ms. Amanda Orlando, so one of our three student reps. This is our first meeting, so I wanted to give her official introduction and welcome her. Thank you.
Okay, hi, I'm Amanda Orlando. As you know, I'm the senior representative, as was Leanne and Dom. I'll be talking about our recent blood drive that we just had because I was one of the co-chairs with Olivia Goncalves, and it was very successful. So just recently, on November 10th, we had our first fall blood drive. We, it was well-organized. We held a record high for PVHS by receiving 61 pints of blood and actually one plasma donation. We have exceeded our goal in previous year donations. We are very grateful for everyone who has donated for the kids who needed, who needed the most. And it was not just students in our school, but the community members, staff, faculty. Everyone contributed. There's a lot of people, and we appreciate everyone who took their time out of their day to donate. And we're very confident in our next blood drive, which will be held in the spring. And we know that will be successful as well. So that was our blood drive.
And apparently, since the last meeting, a lot of events have happened.
A lot.
We've had great success with Color Wars and Spirit Week in general. There was a great amount of participation with the different themes that had gone on over the week, and an amazing enthusiasm for Color Wars itself, which was held on the 5th. Senior's one, of course, go class of 22. And I'd like to thank the administrators, the class advisors, and the media production team for putting it all together and make it run as smoothly as possible. Even though we can directly support our, you know, teams, it was a great event, and I really felt the enthusiasm throughout the school. The CLU drama, which was held from the 5th to the 7th, was a great success. We were able to hold it even with the restrictions in place. I was able to attend the drama on the 7th, and it was a phenomenal production, honestly.
It was great.
I think it is one of the best that has been held in years. And that is, you know, difficult to say, but hon- honestly, I loved it. I absolutely loved it. So I'd like to congratulate the entire, you know, cast and crew of CLU and thank Dr. Masara for being able to bring it all together. The Mu Alpha Theta, the Mathon Society induction was yesterday, and it was a great success with 30 new inductees, which is on par with previous years. We weren't able to have an induction last year, so having an induction this year was really a great boost to the society. And for officers who are already on the board, including myself as president, spoke along with four new inductees, talking about.
with four new inductees, talking about core leadership, service, character, and scholarship qualities that are really necessary to such societies. And tomorrow, representatives of the student board will go talk with the lunch program director and the, the representative of, sorry, Aramark? Yeah, sorry, Aramark, which is the food provider, to talk about any concerns, and talk about the possibility of renewing their contract for providing food in our school. So yeah, that's about it.
That's really it, yeah. Has that happened before, Dominic, that the students went and spoke?
No, this is the first time it is happening in about, I'd say, 20 years. Last time it happened was 2003. So it really is a great opportunity to see the type of discussion that is happening and really get student input into what we perceive the food quality and content is, so we can really affect whether or not the district will renew its contract.
Nice.
Thank you.
Well, as usual, they stole half of the things I was going to say. Okay, for my report, I do want to now, to share that I had actually met with Captain Robert Young, who's the zone three commander of the New York State Police, and he had been reaching out to all school districts in his zone, really just to make introductions, to ask questions about how they could better support our school district. I thought it was really nice of him to go out of his way to schedule a time to come meet with me. And really, the entire meeting was just about how can we help support your school? How can we partner with the sheriff's office? What can we do to help keep you guys safe? So I know that we help make connections between the sheriff's office and the state police. The reality is, if there's an emergency here, other than our own SRO, the first car to arrive is most likely going to be a state trooper car, just given the proximity. So just wanted to acknowledge and thank him for taking time out of his day to come here and to meet with me. I also want to welcome our new slash old SRO, for the, see him in the back, Deputy Dan Murray's back. So he will be with us for the rest of the school year. We thank Deputy Weinberg for his service, but they did some transfers within, in-house, and Dan is now back as our SRO for the remainder of the year, and who knows, maybe longer. It's, it's been a long time since we had our last board meeting, but I do want to just recap some of the items we talked about last time. We had our emergency, our first responders read aloud at the elementary school. So it was great, some of our community first responders came in uniform, went to classes, read students books about their occupation, and had some Q and A. In fact, our own SPO, Greg at the elementary school, had the students doing fingerprints and like investigations. It was pretty cool to see first graders. But it was a great event, and I really hope to have even more community involvement next year. It's something we certainly continue to do moving forward. And maybe the highlight of our first responder appreciation events was our equipment and apparatus event. And I want to thank all of the first responders, volunteers, paid. We had quite a representation across many departments. Our ambulance corps was here, the fire department was here, the sheriff's office was here with their tank, and a community member was able to arrange the Westchester County Police helicopter, which was definitely star of the show. But it was really a great opportunity to, both the high school and the middle school students took advantage. They went out during lunch, they got to ask questions, they got to check it out, they were climbing all over the stuff, like there was a bomb robot, and the kids were putting on the suits. It was just a really great event, and just to see the students interact with our first responders was great to see. So again, something we certainly hope to continue doing moving forward. The middle school held their red ribbon week, and again, Halloween seems like a long time ago, but the Putnam Valley Education Foundation held their trunk or treat event. It was extremely well attended, there were a ton of people there, and I do want to extend my appreciation to all those who volunteered to decorate and hand out candy to our students and community members. One in particular person who I won't shout out, but I almost didn't recognize. The high school play, I got to see it on Friday night. It was an excellent performance. I was happy to see the number of students that were involved. Definitely kept you on the edge of your seat, trying to figure out who did it. But again, kudos to the cast and crew, as well as Dr. Maser for putting that on. We already spoke a little bit about the Color Wars, and the National Honor Society Blood Drive, and the Mu Alpha Theta induction. So all that stuff you covered. This afternoon, we had a meeting of our district diversity, equity, inclusivity meeting. We reviewed our draft policy, and again, more iterations to come. We discussed what our goal would be for this year, and really, most of the conversation focused around ways in which to incorporate more student voice on that committee. Communication went out to the building steering committees, as well as a bunch of the school-based organizations regarding the establishment of our superintendent's council, which will be sort of a district-wide steering committee that'll be available to our parents who are interested. Just a quick COVID update, our numbers have been much better than they were last meeting. We currently have one staff member and two students who are out, a total of 16 students are quarantined from the school. There are approximately 15 outside of school exposures as well. Those are actually all elementary school students, so all in all, a much lower number than last time we met. I encourage everyone to be on the lookout for their November newsletter. Some of the highlights are Veterans Day message, thank you for the first responders who participated in our events, a request from our science research students looking for mentors, and more information on fall athletics. That's it, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business. Item one.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools appoint Stephanie, I'm sorry if I get it wrong, Toribio, to a four-year probationary term as a Spanish teacher, commencing on October 28th, 2021, and terminating on October 27th, 2025, in the tenure area of languages other than English, LOTE, at the middle school Step 1 BA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Toribio holds Spanish 7 through 12 initial certification. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term, and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of high school campus monitor Karen Cobb from the district effective the close of business on June 30th, 2022, as per document number 89/22 attached to the agenda and the official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of teaching assistant Leslie Goldfine from the district effective of the close of business on June 30th, 2022, as per document 90/22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. What was that, four?
Four.
Five, please.
Four.
Oh, four, sorry.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Sandra Offe, a best monitor from the district for the purpose of retirement, effective the close of business on November 10th, 2022, as per document 93/22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Robin Wolf, a bus driver, from the district for the purpose of retirement, effective the close of business on January 1st, 2023, as per document number 9422 attached to the meeting to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
Just, I know we have plenty of time with all of these individuals. They're giving their notice way in advance, but I do want to take this opportunity to thank them all for their many years of dedicated service to our school district and our students. So, thank you.
And hopefully COVID will allow a real celebration in the spring. We've had some creative ones the past couple of years, but I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to amend the temporary appointment of Yvonne Maza as office assistant, to a probationary appointment as office assistant at the high school on Step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule effective November 19th, 2021, subject to the satisfactory completion of a 52-week probationary period ending November 18th, 2022.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to terminate the employment of Francesca Bodeska, a long-term substitute teacher, effective November 5th, 2021.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Number eight?
Eight.
Eight, sorry.
No problem. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve entering into a supplemental memorandum of agreement with the CSEA effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023, as per document 88/22 related to compensation for unused accumulated vacation days for unit members upon resignation for retirement, document attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number nine, please.
I lose. All right, this one does have to add the glasses, I can't cheat on that one. All right. Whereas Putnam Valley Central School District, the district, is the sponsor of certain improvements at Putnam Valley Elementary School, the school, involving installation of water treatment equipment, the project. And whereas pursuant to the New York State Environmental Review Act, SECCRA, as set forth in Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and the requirements of implementing regulations set forth at 6 NYCRR Part 617, the regulations, the district desires to comply with SECCRA and the regulations with respect to the project. And whereas pursuant to the regulations, the district has considered the project in light of the actions included on the Type 1 list specified in Section 617.4 of the regulations, and in light of the actions included on the Type 2 list specified in Section 617.5 of the regulations, now therefore be resolved that the project constitutes a Type 2 action as the quoted term is defined in the regulation, because it falls within the ambit of one or more of the following actions, including on the Type 2 list specified in 6 NYCRR Section 617.5 subsection C1, 2, and/or 8. 1, maintenance or repair involving no substantial changes in existing structure or facility. 2, replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure, facility, and kind on the same site, and/or 8, routine activities of educational institutions, including expansion of existing facilities by less than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area. The project is not subject to further review under SECCRA. Notwithstanding that the project is not subject to further review under SECCRA, the district will continue to comply with guidance issued by the New York State Education Department as applicable. A copy of this resolution shall be provided to the New York State Education Department.
Nicely said. Second.
Questions or comments?
I was just going to summarize, that's a lot of words to say, that there's no further action required from an environmental standpoint regarding the installation of new water filtration equipment at Putnam Valley Elementary School. And just a reminder to the community that during our routine testing, the PFOC chemical was discovered, and this has been the remediation effort to abate any, any chemical from being part of the water system.
I've never, ever in public said the word "ambit" before. So that's a first for me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 10, please.
This one's a nice length. Resolved to nominate Cheryl Brady as a candidate for New York State School Board Association's Area 10 Director vacancy.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Okay, we are now going to open up the meeting for public comment on any topic. Sorry, have to be back.
Barbara, your names?
I'm sorry?
State your names and address.
Oh, yeah. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Patty Villanova, and I live on West Avenue in Putnam Valley. I have a couple of items I'd like to put into the record tonight. Number one, my long, many years of dealing with school boards and local politics, I just want to say that this is without a doubt the worst school administration I have ever dealt with in my history in Putnam Valley. This board has absolutely no concern for the residents of this town, especially the taxpayers. You continue on, this COVID that happened, that we have been through, this pandemic, not once in any of your considerations, you spend money like drunken sailors, no matter what, without a hiccup. No matter how many people in this community lost their businesses, lost their livelihoods, are still struggling, that have to make a decision between paying their mortgage and paying their heating bills, that does not compute with this board. You just go on your merry way and spend, spend, spend. Whatever money you get, you never use it to lower taxes, it is just total spending. I, absolutely, I've never seen anything like it, and plus, we have a declining student population, as was predicted years ago before we built this high school. The other thing I wanted to speak about again, but this time with a little more detail, is the muzzle mask policy. I mean, really, look at you people. Do you ever look at how ridiculous you all look with these face masks? I mean, this has gotten to the point, it is insane. New York State is like one of the few places in the world where we still have a mask mandate like this. And, you know, back during the Holocaust, they had identification, they were yellow badges that they made the Jews wear, they would call them Jew badges. That's what these masks are like. That's exactly what they are like. They do nothing. Now, I'm going to give you some information from one of these sources that I, I sent the last time I spoke about this, and this is the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health. This is a 60-page report, I can send you email links to it, so you can read it, don't take my word for it, but these are just some of the things that they found. Masking schoolchildren in particular is egregious, it is an abomination in general. School-aged children are virtually invulnerable to COVID, yet they are the ones that are most traumatized and adversely affected by the masks. We have never enacted such policies before COVID, despite the many instances of infectious disease far more deadly to children that have come and gone through the years. The lockdown, shutdown, shelter in place, the school closures, all of that, they have had little effect on the trajectory of the virus, but have exacted an enormous price on all of us while conferring no advantage. For the under 18 cohort, the risks are vanishingly small. Okay, blah, 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 cases peak to extinction. Masking children causes a host of health problems. These include claustrophobia, increased heart rate, dizziness, headaches, nausea, stress, skin infections, sinusitis, reduced immune resilience, lack of empathy, and increased emotional stress. And this is with a district that wants social and emotional learning. That is such a big part of your curriculum and your mandate, social and emotional, but yet you traumatize these kids by making them wear masks. They do nothing to the, to prevent the spread of the virus in children or adults, and they have actual adverse effects and can themselves become Now, one other thing that this report brings up, oh, and they talk about, there was other high-level members of the medical establishment, pre-politization of COVID, who had also criticized the masks. That included the wonderful Dr. Fauci, it included the former Surgeon General Jerome Adams, who said they are not effective in preventing the general public from catching Masks, including N95 respirators, do not prevent the spread of infection, including bacteria and far smaller viral particles. One other thing, too, that they mentioned, because I know how environmentally concerned you all are, these masks are a terrible threat to the environment. 3.4 billion masks are discarded worldwide daily. Most of them are made in China, where there is no environmental protection. Among the compounds, the toxic compounds that they found were heavy metals, formaldehyde, biocides, graphene. It's going to take 450 years for the total breakdown of the dangerous compounds that are in these masks. So in conclusion, I would say this board should follow the science and do something, get rid of the mask mandate, whatever it takes, because you are actually harming the children. Thank you.
I'm going to try to be as concise and not rambling as I normally am, so I'm going to try to do that tonight. I know, Dr. Luff, that you're aware of an issue with specifically two books in the high school. I don't know if the board is aware. One of them is Out of Darkness, which is a fictional story about a school explosion in East Texas in 1937. The book is a fictional book in the sense that the story surrounding the explosion, which is 390 pages out of the 400-page book that I drove to Brewster to take out of their library to read it yesterday, cover to cover. It focuses on a family, a fictional family, and events that are fictional, and it really does not discuss the explosion itself, the root causes of the explosion, mentions it briefly, national gas leak, the fact that no one was held accountable because they believed at the time that the school administrators and everyone didn't have the foresight or know-how to expect that this national gas explosion would happen. But that's two or three pages out of this entire book. The book centered around this family, discusses the experiences of the protagonist, the main character, a girl of Mexican descent who lived in San Antonio, who was then brought to East Texas by her stepfather after her mother had passed away. The descriptions in the book of their relationship early on focus around forced masturbation of the girl, or by the girl, of the stepfather when she was somewhere between the ages of four and 10, it's not very specific. The culmination of the book ends with him raping her, and then beating her, raping her, and then murdering her, along with her African-American boyfriend. There is gratuitous violence in this book, there is rampant verbal racism and physical racism in this book. And I bring this up, not to censor, because I have explained to you before I don't believe in censorship. Instead, I got to look at the policy of the district regarding materials for the students, and this was in the high school library. The Board of Education recognizes its responsibility for the selection of instructional materials. The Board expects district teachers and administrators to recommend books and other materials in accord with sound educational principles and practices, and to use them effectively in the classroom. Being that I just explained to you what this book is about, what it says, and how it describes events to underage people, can you please explain to me so that I have a better understanding of your thought process? How that enhances the educational achievement of our students? How that? Let's leave it at that, because I'm about to ramble. So that'll be the first question.
So, while I'm aware of the salacious content, I, unlike you, have not read the book cover to cover, but what I can say is, content like that is written in a way...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, content like that is purposely written in a way to evoke emotion. People go towards books in which invoke emotion. So you and I can take a walk down memory lane and talk about all the books that we were probably forced to read in high school, but the one common thread that every one of those books will have in common is there'll be a moment in which they're trying to evoke emotion, right? So I could ask you how you feel when you read that part of the book? Do you want to share what, how that made you feel?
Sure. I was utterly disgusted at what I read and the fact that a fictional book about a real-life situation that happened, it's not a historical book.
I understand.
Okay.
So, would it be fair to say that you think most people felt the same level of disgust reading that part?
Sure, but how does that enhance the educational value of the students? There are a lot of ways to discuss the history of this incident and the 400 children and teachers who were killed in the explosion, which also brings an emotional response, which is what I assume we're trying to do here, that's what you're saying. You don't have to do it with a book that is a fiction, with a fictional family, with all the violence and racism and pedophilia involved.
Okay. So I just need to clarify. One, this is not a book in which we teach, right? This is a book that's available for individual students to hand out. It is not part of our curriculum. It is, if students choose to check this out, they read this for their own free will. It is most definitely not meant to be a historical recollection of the explosion, right? You're right, it's set, the story, the fictional story is set at a time at which that explosion took place, but it's not like this is a book we're reviewing in our social studies classroom teaching about the explosion. This book has zero curricular piece, other than it was recommended as part of a collection that's available in our library for students who choose to read it. But the fear, and I know that you're opposed to censorship, but I'm worried the path we're going down, right? You and I probably both read To Kill a Mockingbird when we were in high school.
Sure.
All right? The fictional depiction of a black male raping a young white woman, and subsequently killed for it. That's probably the most popular book ever read in high schools.
Right. And that happened.
We can go through.
And that happened. Not in that book, the way it was written, but that was an occurrence that African-American people at the time were subjected to.
So are we going to...
That is a historical...
Okay, but are we going to pretend that a stepfather never took advantage of a little girl?
Of course not, but that's not the point.
Well, why, what's the difference? I mean, we can look, we can go through, we could analyze every single Shakespeare book, if you want. Every one is murder, incest. Are we going to get rid of all his books?
As a proud and practicing Jew, my entire life, in which I raised my daughter to be Jewish, there is more educational value from a historical perspective, if you're looking to elicit emotion, than to have Mein Kampf in the library than this book. Do you not see that?
That's your opinion.
There is nothing in the content of that book that I subscribe to, nor the person who wrote it am I a fan of in any way, but from a historical perspective, to explain how, what was the mindset of that person, and what he said he was going to do prior to World War II and the Holocaust, and how it came about. There is a historical and learning perspective there that actually has educational value so that people, so that students can see what happened at the time in one of the biggest events of the 20th century.
So is your argument we should just burn all the fictional books?
Did I say burn any book?
Well, you're talking about censoring books, but then you're bringing up...
I'm not talking about censoring, I'm saying I don't...
You're bringing up historical events. This is obviously not a book that's teaching about historical events.
I'm, I'm...
Well, can I make a comment as an avid reader, and anybody who's watching who knows me since I'm four years old says that they very rarely saw me without a book in my hand. And I read very salacious novels in my younger than 18-years, and that was before the access to a lot of information that's already on the internet, movies, et cetera. I wish that some of the books I read, I had a school librarian I could have talked to about them. I was out there reading them on my own, I was reading them out of curiosity, and I wish that I had a school librarian like Mary Fran DeMay, who would be available, aware of the sensitivity, and really work me through some of my emotional responses.
Have you ever read the book A Child Called It?
Yes.
Okay. That has scholastic value. That's a true story about a child who was brutalized by, I believe, his mother, if I'm not mistaken?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that would elicit emotion. That is a, that is a true verifiable account that students here could understand about child abuse, how it can manifest, how it can, how it can come to be, how it could be allowed to happen in a neighborhood, how things were not done to stop it. This is a fictional book, and again, I'm not saying burn the book, please do not put words in my mouth. Anybody can take this book out of any public library that they want to, and anybody can buy the book, and anybody can do whatever. What I am simply saying is that if our tax dollars are going to materials to educate our students, then we can use materials that have educational value. A fictional book centered around a true event, and then don't discuss the event except for three pages out of 400, and just tell this salacious story about a nonexistent, nonexistent family and what happened to them, it blurs the point. Is it a historical book? Is it a book about an event, and here's what happened, and this was the environment at the time? It's completely fictional, it doesn't add to the education of our students. I'm not saying burn the book. I'm not saying I even want the book taken out. I'm saying that what, I'm saying that I'm not really sure what the criteria of the board is to determine the educational value of a book, when you can take a book like this, when you can take this book and put it in the library and say, take it out to elicit an emotional response for yourself, and then think on it, and reflect how it makes you feel, when there are other books, or other periodicals, or other means of attaining information in a library that are historically true, that are accurate, that is verified? It's a waste of resources to bring in a fictional book based around an event that happened that is not real. Okay, that's the first book.
But isn't there so much historical fiction out there?
Sure, there's historical fiction.
So all this historical fiction, if it's fiction, why is, you're suggesting there's no value to it?
I'm saying, I'm saying that there are, we're not, we're not going to see eye to eye on this, that's fine. I am saying that in order to elicit a response, an emotional response, which is what you're saying, okay, was the intention of having this book in the school, okay? There are other books that are much more effective at doing that, that are based on real events, historically accurate, true events, that you guys could have chosen to bring in and spend money on those materials. This is a waste of resources. I went on to the, I'll give you another example from another perspective, another angle. I went on to the library website, the, what's it called, the MS something or other? I don't know. MLA Solutions, okay? The first book there is Howard Zinn's People's History of America, which is a pseudo-piece of history, from my perspective, which is a complete fallacy of the founding and the historical nature of the United States of America. You may disagree, you have every right to disagree. I'm not saying take the book out. I'm not saying that that book should not be in this library, or not be available for the students. I think it's kind of sick that you decided, it's a good book to put in there, being that it's, in my opinion, completely untrue, but that's the point. Did you put Debunking Howard Zinn by Mary Graber in the library so that the students who read Howard Zinn's book can get the other perspective and see where maybe his history, his historical reporting may have been flawed? And the answer to that is you didn't, because I checked for that book and it's not in the library, or at least it's not on the website for the library. You don't have any Thomas Sowell books. I noticed that you have this book, Beyond Magenta, which was a lot more difficult for me, just from a reading perspective, to get through than the 400-page home I read on You don't have anything from Abigail Schreier. There's no countervailing point of view on a particular topic. You're making that decision on purpose. I'm not trying to insinuate if it sounds like a duck, and it walks like a duck, it's a duck, where there's smoke, there's fire, correlation equals causation, whatever. I'm not accusing you of anything. I'm saying that it's very disheartening, and it raises some red flags as a parent, when I am concerned that as my daughter progresses through this school district, there are going to be materials available to her that are either factually inaccurate, corrupting, and I'll explain that in a second, with no countervailing position on a, countervailing position on a particular topic, or a specific book that you have in circulation, such as Howard Zinn's People's History of America. You don't, you don't have Mary Graber's book. You chose not to have Mary Graber's book. Maybe it was never brought up, but I would assume that if someone said, let's have Howard Zinn's book, because this is like, you know, what we really need to teach our students, because this is like, you know, the truth, this is, this is real history, well, maybe instead of teaching them what to think, which is exactly what you're doing, maybe let's at least put in Mary Graber's book and let them decide for themselves what they think is more historically accurate or not. You're not doing that, or you haven't done that. Could it have been an oversight? Sure. Again, you have Beyond Magenta, but you don't have anything from Abigail Schreier. You don't have anything from anybody on the opposite perspective of world events and history and sociology and blah, 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 such as a Thomas Sowell or another thinker from that perspective on your website, which I mean, which I assume means you don't have it in the library, although I could be wrong, I have it in Skywardia library. I tend to think I'm not wrong. That's, that's, to me, that is a disservice to our students. That's a disservice to yourselves as educators, because you're not giving them a full-rounded point of view. I heard in my first meeting that I attended a couple months back, there were, there were lessons that we never taught because we didn't hear those points of views from Native American scholars, or this, that, on a given topic, or an African-American scholar, and we had to have more well-rounded sources to discuss a particular topic. Okay, sure, whatever. I mean, there's history, and then there's, you know, people's interpretation. Okay, sure, whatever. I mean, there's history and then there's, you know, people's interpretation of history? No problem. Let's give the students a well-rounded view? And let them decide what, what's historically accurate in their own mind? You didn't do it with either of these two books? Meaning Howard Zinn's book? Or Beyond Magenta? Or any of the other books like Beyond Magenta that I assume are in the library? Lastly, and I do mean lastly, I will, I will try to be very concise with this point. We had a conversation a couple months back after the meeting? When I asked you to define for me what a woman was? You chose not to because you couldn't? And you told me that this isn't a vocabulary exam? Which you're right, it wasn't. But, you know, I made my point. The fact remains, and I'm not trying to be controversial? Or cruel? Or mean in any way? Just the opposite. Gender dysphoria is a mental, for lack of a better word, disease. By the DSM-V, cited by the DSM-V. Okay? I'm not a doctor. I'm not a medical illness practitioner? Uh, a mental illness practitioner? But it is in the DSM-V. Like all other mental disorders ranging from schizophrenia? To bipolar disease, to whatever? It doesn't make you any less of a human being? Or any less deserving of empathy? And sympathy? And compassion? Just because you suffer from that disease? You are this, you are just as important and special a human being as anybody else who doesn't suffer from that disease. You're not any better or worse? But putting materials like this in the school? Telling students that they can change their sex? Even though you told me you weren't telling students they could change their sex? When you put this in the library, you are telling them that? Doesn't need to come out of your mouth for, for you to be telling them that? You're corrupting their innocence? You're turning you're turning science, oh, the great and vaunted science, on its head? There has been no breakthrough? That I am aware of, and I'm sure any of you are aware of? In how mammalian biology? Subset human mammal, human biology? Works from a sexual reproduction point of view? Mammals? Every mammal on planet Earth is a sexually dimorphic creature. There are two genders. You cannot change your gender. It doesn't mean that you're any less of a human being? Or any less important of a human being, or special of a human being? Or, or, or that your character is any worse or better than anyone else just because you suffer from a disease? You are entitled to help. Now, I, I'm not the principal, the superintendent, whatever? I'm not on the New York State Assembly, I'm not the governor? Okay, I can't write a law? Okay, I'm sure, I know there's already, uh, regulations about how schools are supposed to handle this topic? But when I tell you in the last meeting I was at? Where I brought this up, I don't want you corrupting my daughter? And telling her that she could become a boy? When that's physically, scientifically impossible? That this thought process is purely subjective? It's a subjective sense of one's self? There's nothing objective about it? There's no science that gives this any weight? And you're allowing this to be taught by either saying it or not saying it? But putting materials in the school to teach it for you? So you don't have to do it is a problem? It doesn't matter if you're diabetic? It doesn't matter if you have COVID? It doesn't matter if you're an acute schizophrenic, multiple personality person? It doesn't matter! You're a human being! You deserve help! You deserve to be treated! You deserve to get the treatment that you see fit with the direction of your doctor and your family and yourself? It's none of my business how you treat whatever illness you may have? Whether it be mental or physical? It's not my business, but it is my business when my daughter is a member of this school, is a member of the, of the elementary school in this district? And you are allowing children to believe something that is a physical impossibility? Let me, let me finish it this way. You said you were a biology teacher, right?
No.
Okay, alright. Let's assume, do you guys still teach biology and science, in the science curriculum? To either middle school or high schoolers? Okay. I'll be your stand-in biology teacher. We get to sexual reproduction, mammalian sexual reproduction? Bring it down to human sexual reproduction? There's two sexes, a male and a female, this is how it's done, you put it in the health class? That's really where I learned, in the seventh grade health class in Clarkstown High School North in, uh, in Rockland County? But regardless. And now, I'm gonna play the part of the student. Well, Mr. London, uh, I I, I'm on the, I, I'm part of the LGBTQ transitioning, transitioning community? And I don't believe, even though I was assigned at birth a sex of whatever? Okay? I don't believe I am that. And the fact that you are telling me that my self-assessment? My subjective self-assessment of what I am and who I am? That doesn't comport with what I feel? Subjective feel, you get where this is going? Okay? You are wrong for teaching that! Well, Mr. London, the student, I mean, I have to tell you that, that's, that's not the way, you know, biology works. There are two, you know, it's a, we're sexually dimorphic species and you know, we're part of the mammalian family and, you know, this is what it is. What happens when your biology teacher is caught in this mess? Where the student says to the biology teacher, "You're wrong, and now you are afflicting me? You're harming me? You're not, you're not accepting my personal sense of self? My subjective sense of self? In front of the whole class, and I expect you to apologize to me? And tell everybody in this class that what you just said was wrong?" What is your policy for the biology teacher to address that student? Are they supposed to say, "You know what? You're right. Shouldn't have said that. There's more than two genders, there's more than two sexes? I was wrong." Students, this, this student who is clearly making this decision based on a, a, a subjective self-assessment of what she feels, he or she feels? He would like to or believes he or she is? That's more that, that's, that's more accurate? Than what I'm teaching you in the last hundred years of settled biology, settled science? Correct? Settled science, right? Settled science and biology? That we have all learned and know to be true? Sorry, shouldn't have taught it that way. I mean, is, is that, is that the is that the, uh, policy now? That we don't teach biology anymore? Because someone may get offended? Because they have a mental disorder that is between them and their parents and their doctor to treat? Just because I say that gender dysphoria is a mental disorder or a mental illness? Doesn't mean that the person who is suffering from it, I have to go back to this? It doesn't mean that that person is any less than a human being? It doesn't mean that that person should be shunned, or stigmatized? And you know what you're actually doing? And I don't mean you, I mean society, but you know, listen, we're here, so you? What you're actually doing is stigmatizing children and adults? Who suffer from a mental disorder? What you're saying is that people who suffer from this particular mental disorder, it could be others? We could branch this out to others later? But in terms of right now, this mental disorder? They're, they're less than? They're not, they're not, they're not equal or equitable in your terms? They're not, it, it, it's, we have to pretend that this doesn't exist because then, then they're less? They're not as good as anybody else? So we have to pretend that this disease is not actually a disease? That's not sympathetic, that's not empathetic, it's not compassionate? If there's a, if there's a, if there's a, um, acute schizophrenic person? Walking down the street saying, "The, uh, the spaceship came down to me and told me that I'm supposed to do this, that, and the other? And, uh, you know, I'm, uh, whatever, whatever, and blah, 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 blah." Okay? And you let that person just roam the street? And didn't reach out to their family if you knew how to get in touch with them? Okay? Or didn't call the authorities to protect them from themselves? Okay? And try to get that person help? You would not be doing them any service? You would be doing them a disservice? It's the same thing here. It is not my business to tell a specific student? Or a specific adult? How to live their life? Okay? I, I, listen, you're a consenting adult, you wanna do what you wanna do, go at it. I think, I think you're wrong, okay, from a biological perspective? I don't think you're gonna make yourself happy, but you do you. No problem, there's no bearing on my life? The bearing on my daughter's life and her education? And her values is very much my business? So you guys really need to figure out how you're going to, moving forward? Start addressing this? Are you gonna continue to stigmatize this disease? And pretend that it's, that it's not there? And that someone's someone's subjective self-perception of what they'd like to be? Or what they ought to be? Or what they think they are? Is more concrete and defined? Than actual science? If, if that's the case, then you're doing then you're doing a really poor job of educating students? And you're doing a poor job of showing that student? The compassion? And the empathy and the sympathy that they deserve? They are wonderful people. They are special people. They are beautiful people. Just because they suffer from a disease? A mental disorder, does not make them less? But you're, you're making them believe they are less? By allowing this thought in their head to mushroom? That's not how you help someone? You think you're being helpful, you're not? Now, there's a state regulation, the Dr. Love, you and I spoke about? You said that, you know, this is what the state handed down? And we're, uh, you know, not trying to go up against the state health department? Okay, fine, I, I mean, but my answer would be, my daughter is now involved, so grow a spine? And figure something out, and how you're gonna change this? Because this is not normal. And when I say normal, it's not-
Howard, uh, listen, man, I'm trying to work with you.
Okay, so work with me.
Three-minute limit, we're over it by 30 minutes.
Very true.
We gotta get to, excuse me, you can wait, when it's your turn, you can talk.
Dr. Love, you're not wrong.
Doesn't work that way?
You're not wrong.
Howard and I have a great relationship. I will let him finish, but we need to get moving on. Thank you.
My, I will finish by saying that I don't believe you are evil people? I don't believe that is your intention to hurt our children and your students? What I do believe is that you have a a belief in your mind that trying to go along, to get along, to be super nice, to be over-accepting? Is a way to help people with problems? And if we have to ensnare the people who don't have that problem into this sphere? In order to make this person who has that problem feel better about themselves? That's not compassionate. You're not helping that person, and now you're corrupting my daughter? And I have a problem with that. I don't think you're evil people, I don't think you're bad people, I don't think you you got on the board to make all these children's lives horrible? I, I agree with what was said first. This mask is a joke, okay? It's not, I didn't wanna bring it up, okay? I'm not beginning to get into that. I don't believe you guys are bad people. I don't believe that you're trying to hurt my daughter. What I'm telling you is, is that the way you're allowing this to mushroom? Is going to hurt a lot of students? And I care about my daughter, and I care about my daughter's innocence? And I care about her intellect? And I care about how she grows up? And I care, I care about her values? And wanting to help people who are less fortunate? Wanting to help people who are suffering? This is not helping them. You guys are not stupid. I mean, come on, you're not stupid. This isn't helping them.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Charlene Pateman. I live at 15 Oak Ridge Drive, Putnam Valley. It's been a long time since I've been to a school board meeting. My kids are grown. They graduated in 2015 and 2017. First, I wanna say thank you to all of you for being on the school board. I know it's not a paid position. I'm sure that during these volatile times right now, it's been tough? And I empathize with that. But I, I was compelled to come tonight because I've been speaking to a lot of the parents and in doing that, they've been showing me a lot of the content? And, and a lot of things that have definitely taken me by surprise? Maybe these things were, were there when my kids were little and I missed it? Which made me feel a little bit silly to hear that these parents picked that stuff up? But I will have to say, Mr. Love, that I'm surprised at the way that you're defending some of the stuff that's in the content in these books? That I, I came tonight really wanting to start out by saying, "Thank you for listening to me, I really feel where you're coming from." But talk about an emotional response? I got an emotional response when you defended some of these books? And I do think that you should read them from beginning to end? So with that being said? Also, I wanna talk a little bit about the curriculum that's becoming so controversial also? Whatever acronym you wanna use, CRT or DEI? To me, I, I don't, it, there's theories being taught here, and theories at college? These concepts are college-level concepts? They are not history? Because if they were history? They'd be telling how my kids grew up? They'd be telling how we recognize people for the content of their character and not the color of their skin? Like we were told to raise our kids to believe? When I was raising my kids? And you know what? I think we did a really good job. I think we really raised great kids that are very inclusive and very empathetic. My son's class nominated a special needs kid for Prom King. I, my 24-year-old recently had a Halloween party and there were kids of all colors there? And you know what? I never really noticed before who might have been what? But this is a conversation now, and, and if they wanna switch the script? That's fine! But it's not history? That we've been so bad? And that people have been held back? That's a dialogue, that's an opinion, that isn't a fact? And it is not better? For these kids to believe that? And it is not the job of the school? To take moral things? To take moral issues? Sexual issues? And to take them to the building here? I worked very hard, and I thought long and hard from the day I got pregnant, probably long before, how I was gonna talk to my children about sex? And I'm sorry, Jeannie, Janine, if you felt that you needed a librarian? My daughter, my son, they don't need a librarian? They had me always, and I would be very upset if a librarian intervened on something that I planned very carefully how I was gonna talk to my children about? There's a lot of controversial things that are coming to the table? And they're coming at a time where we have children walking around with face masks? Their parents financially crippled? The world is in a very bad place? And we're bringing politics into our middle school yearbook? Left spun politics into our middle school yearbook? There are so many speeches going on from our government these days that start out with saying, "This is not about division." "This is all about division." And I'm here just to urge you. I know, I've, I've, the reason I'm here today is I've gotten involved in a lot of politics lately because of things that I've seen and I've been unhappy about? And I was very mad at a lot of people for not doing what I thought they should have done? And I did my homework and found out there's a lot of things you can't do? I, I realize that. I know that you fall inside of certain parameters that you have to follow? But I'm here urging you to find every loophole that you can to stand for this community? To not be living under guidelines like this? I went over the weekend and I did some math? And Putnam County, since the beginning of COVID, and I will not minimize COVID at all? I lost one of my best friends, I've lost family members? But COVID, the result, the number of COVID deaths that we've had in Putnam County? Are 98 deaths? That comes out to .098-something percent? If you wanna count Westchester hospitals too? They're .234 percent? I think everybody has a choice at this point to decide whether or not that's a risk they wanna take when they walk out the door? And I think it falls under the same category that Mr. London was saying that you're asking the healthy to be careful for the weak? That's, I'm, I'll do anything I can for my weak people, the people around me? But to tell me that I have to wear a mask because you're afraid? Wear a mask! Why, why is the kid that's parents wants to stand for the fact that their body can do what God made it to do? And defend them and give them natural immunity? Why is that child to be made to stand out? The job of the school is to let the kids know? That everybody should be accepted for whatever choices their families make? That's the job here? It's not to tell what the choices are? It's not to question somebody's moral standards? Uh, you know, I, I'll lead, I'll lead the gay parade? But there are people that their religion doesn't support that? I don't agree with that! I don't agree with that. My kids always know, if you use the word gay, I used to say, "If you're gay, just so you know, you're welcome in my house. We accept everybody." That's not where I'm coming from? But that's not fair? To tell a person that has true political, true religious beliefs? That they have to let their children be subjected to that conversation by the librarian? So on my final note, I would like to talk about also, while we're discussing COVID and the masks and the impacts that the children are having three years of their lives. I mean, I have clients that go through high school and they've literally spent three of their high school years masked up. They don't even know what it's like to have a real good time. And it's unfortunate. But while all of this is going on, families, again, a lot of these families are still economically trying to get their lives back. I've lost two businesses during COVID myself. Thankfully, I don't have young children. I wouldn't even, I can't even tell you. I probably, I don't even know how I would, I might have jumped off the bridge, really. I commend these parents. But I've been to the town board meeting. I've looked over the school budget. And their spending, as Patty Villanova said, as if there's no economic crisis going on here. What about those kids? They're coming to school with no money and hearing about the new extras that we have to have. There's no extras right now for each individual in this town. And there shouldn't be extras in the school or the town raises being given. I'm all for a raise, but it's not the time. It's, we've got to recover before we can start giving extras to people, before people have even gotten to where they are, where they belong in their own lives. And I have one more question when I talk about that. In my conversations with all that's going on in the school districts, I know of many parents that are intending to pull their children out of Putnam Valley schools or public schools, I should say, not just Putnam Valley. This is not just going on here, as all of us know. And we're talking about doing extra things, just in this meeting alone. And that's not even being considered. What's going to happen to our taxes if we lose these students? And we just keep fixing things up and making them better for people that might be coming? What about the people that might be leaving? I can't look back in two years and tell me, oops, we didn't mean it. You've got to look today. The means has to meet the ends. You're taxing people out of their houses. And I used to sit and listen to the older people say it, and I couldn't understand, and now I really get it. It's extra, I mean, you go to a town board meeting where nobody wants anything to change, and you come to a school board meeting where we have to have the state-of-the-art everything. Well, if we don't want to attract anybody to the town, then we don't. We're a small-bedroom community, and this is what we can afford them. We need to live the way that we can afford. Or we need to go to the town, all of us together, and let industry in. But we need to come together and have these kids be brought up in a town where it was all-inclusive. There was family values. I'm so proud of my kids being raised here. Kindergarten through 12th grade, nothing but a great experience. They've made great friends that will be their friends forever. And I'm grateful for them. I listen to these parents, and my heart is broken. So I'm here tonight urging you to, again, I know that you have your boundaries. But please, look for the loopholes for the people that are normal to be allowed to be normal. To become, we are the land, we are the land of the free and the home of the brave. We are not the land of the weak and the home of the sick. Thank you.
Have any other comments?
Hello, Krista Strab, Panopis Hollow Road. I had written an email a while ago to the board back in June when I had received that yearbook. And I kind of told my story a little bit about how I grew up in the Bronx. I was removed from my home because of a stepfather. And I was moved up with my sister in Cortland Manor and went to the Lake Land School District. I felt so much love in these schools. They took me, I think the principal's name was Jan Bushy, and I still remember her. And they helped me. And I graduated high school. I went to college. I graduated cum laude from Iona. And I owe everything to the public educators that did that for me. I had nothing, and I had an attitude, a really bad attitude. I had an abusive stepfather. He beat my mother. He beat me. And I think if I were coming up here today and I read that book, it would have been a trigger for a child. I don't think people realize that these are real-life situations, and they go on every day. How would a librarian know what my child's history is? If they decided to take out that book? What would happen to her? She doesn't have that problem. That was my problem. But I'm trying to explain to you why I'm so passionate about these things. Sex should not be introduced to a minor. If these books were made into movies, those kids would not be let in. You would need a parent to take them. If you, I'm not against the book. I don't want to ban a book. I want parental consent. If a child walks in and wants to take a book out with this type of sexual content, a parent should sign off on it. They should know what's going on. They should know their child's going in to ask for these books. So that's it. Thank you for listening.
Any other public comments? Okay, so, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I have a torn meniscus. I had a question about the athletic situation before. You had said that in trying to manage the sanitary needs and the spread of COVID and all that, that the visiting teams did not have access to the locker rooms. From someone who played sports in high school, from a welcoming perspective, where are the other team members dressing? What facilities are we offering them? Because just as a, if my daughter plays a sport, sport X, whatever it is, and she goes to another school that has the same policy, and there's nowhere for her to dress, for her to get ready, for the team to come together before the game, that's a very exclusive sounding situation. And I wouldn't want my daughter to be subjected to that. So someone who's coming to our schools, do we have a more welcoming situation for them than you don't have access to what it sounded like was anything? I may have misheard. That's why I'm asking. That's why I wanted to ask before, that was what that was.
So I think the students come already dressed to the games? And that's just something that happened across the region? I think that was last year, that they didn't have access to the locker room?
So since COVID really began, you're understanding of section one and the rest of conference three where
Do you want him to come to the mic?
Yeah. Howard, let him come to the mic just so people can hear.
Thank you.
So since COVID began, it's been the policy of section one, the understanding of conference three, where our school belongs, and many of the other sections and conferences, that when you have an away contest, you come dressed and prepared to play. We do provide them with a space in the gym to meet and congregate and, you know, have their team meetings privately away from the public. But in terms of dressing, preparing, putting on and taking off of equipment, they should come with it ready, and they can take it off when they return back to their school.
But there was a welcoming atmosphere for visiting teams?
Oh, yeah, so for example, in the winter coming up, right? One of the biggest concerns is basketball teams travel together. JV teams and varsity teams take one bus, and then only one team plays at a time. We're reserving sections of our bleachers behind our bench areas for their JV teams, for their coaches specifically, so that they have their own area to congregate, have their meetings, do their things that they need to do without being bothered by us and our people.
And David, and it's the same, David, it's the same when we go away, correct? I mean,
Correct. This is universally, across any schools that we're going to play or anywhere that we're going to travel.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, upcoming meeting topics. Dr. Love?
So I know next month we have the beginning of our budget season. So Ms. Figaro will be giving the long-range projections. And that'll really kick off what'll be the next couple of months of budget season.
Okay. Any comments from board members on any topic?
I just wanted to comment on the first responders week. I thought that was fabulous. But I was most struck by, as we are, somebody mentioned board members are volunteers. When we left our last meeting, Leanne is looking at her phone and says, "Oh, I think I have a call." So she volunteered to do this and then left at about 10:00, 10:30 at night to volunteer to respond to a call. So I can't utter enough that not only is our community first responders, but we're role modeling that for our children. So I just, that struck me, and I've been waiting three weeks to say it. Just hold that thought.
I had the pleasure of attending the Math Honor Society. I'm not going to say the Greek words because I can remove something. Alpha Theta. I had the pleasure of attending it last night. You did a wonderful job, as well as all of the speakers and all of the attendees and the parents. I want to congratulate all of you guys who were awarded the Math Honor Society. That's great that there were 30 of you guys. And, but I just want to call you out because you did a wonderful job of leading the night.
Thank you so much. We put so much effort into ensuring that anyone who enters a society, such as the Math Honor Society, feels comfortable and is ready to be included in such an exclusive group.